Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call it all order and reconvene the regular city council meeting for City of Angels for Tuesday, May 17th. Will you please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier tonight, we had two closed-door sessions, and I'd like to report that under Item A, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to the Valletto Bridge relinquishment, direction was given to the city staff on that one. And in terms of conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, there is no report. It was informational only. And with that, I will ask if any of the council or any staff member has any item on the agenda they wish to remove, or if not, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris, seconded by Vice Mayor Follendorf. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is staff updates. We have a lengthy, comprehensive report. Is there any member of the council that has any questions or comments on items in the I have one question, and perhaps Mr. Hanam would be most appropriate. One of your items that staff met with the management team for the Sustainable Communities Grant, I know that was the first stakeholders' meeting. Myself, Councilman Beehill, and Vice Mayor Follendorf had not yet been appointed to that committee.
Right.
Nor was Ann. Was there any written minutes or any synopsis of what was discussed at that meeting that we could get a copy of?
Yeah, we, they just got put, they're just updating the website right now, but I can get you a copy. I just got the draft of the advisory, the last advisory meeting. The management team is made up of basically COG, myself, Caltrans, and consultant.
Oh, okay.
But we do have...
Well, you've just had one meeting so far, right?
Yeah, that's all we've had. So, and we've only gone through one round of the public meetings, and I can get you all of those minutes and all of those discussions from the walking tours and all that if you need it.
I would like it.
Okay.
And I think as a courtesy, just send it to the four of us, three appointees and the alternate that were appointed a couple of meetings back. Okay. I think that was the only comment that I had. Actually, I did have one more.
Okay.
It's actually under the log, the complaint log. And as you all know, I am particularly interested in progress or lack thereof on the Load Hotel. And I noticed some activity out there today with scaffolding. Is there anything more to report? The last entry was May 9th. Is there anything more you could share with us of recent?
Yeah, just that we're, Steve went out there today to inspect some of the safety measures that they were putting up. And basically, that's what they've been doing right now, doing the safety, doing some of the board replacement for the safety aspects of the abatement. And then we are, we're trying to get the property owner in to see me because they're talking about potentially painting the building or, you know, something like that. So, but I was out of the office when he came in. So, better than that, everything still will go with the city, with the abatement so far. It's just the cleanup items, they cleaned up the safety items, and that's where they're at right now.
Yeah. In addition, I don't know if Steve let you know, but a second abatement notice has been prepared.
Yeah.
It was in a, supposedly going in today's mail.
Yeah, you told me that.
And I don't know what sections of the code you're citing in the abatement notice, but one thing I would hope you're also touching on is that section that talks about where the building is so defective and unsightly or in such other condition or deterioration or disrepair that it diminishes the enjoyment, use, and property values of the adjoining properties. To me, that's a very important part. And I was approached today by two property owners in the vicinity, and they're affected by it.
Right.
Their values, their ability to attract tenants with all the emphasis that we put on downtown revitalization, that is an embarrassment and an eyesore. And we just, so, whatever is appropriate to cite them under, I would certainly encourage you to do that one as well.
There are never different codes we're using to cite, so we'll look at that one as well. I think, I think we have, I think we have used that particular code in the past. I just gotta check with Steve to make sure that, if he hasn't, that we also include that as well.
Yeah.
I know we've done it, at least, I know we did it with the original abatement process, so I'm pretty sure that that continued on, but I'll check, I'll make sure we check that out.
Okay. Any other comments? I have a... Okay. The next item is council updates, and begin to my right with Councilwoman Morris.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Follendorf?
Um, yes. So, I attended COG, and, um, the main discussion at the COG meeting was the pilot program for the, um, replacement of the gas tank. So, there was a public hearing on that and a presentation from the state. And last night, I attended LACCO, and my main concern was SB 1380 and the impacts that bill should have passed to not only local but special districts. And we also voted for Chair and Vice Chair. And so now I am, I've been voted as Chair, and Mike Oliver has been voted as Vice Chair for LACCO.
Great, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. I will go next, and then I'll leave the last, Councilman Soban. Likewise, on the 4th of May, I also attended the COG meeting, and Ms. Follendorf is absolutely correct, a great deal of time was spent discussing this pilot program for alternative way of raising revenues for road maintenance. But one of the other items on the agenda was a discussion on the benefits and perhaps downside of forming a consolidated transportation service agency. And basically, what that is, is to create a, an existing, have either an existing agency, transit district, nonprofit, or creation of a new one to manage and integrate and develop greater efficiency in coordinating transportation needs of people of special needs. And there was a great variance in opinions as to the merits of that, but at least the COG Board agreed to ask the staff to put together some alternatives about how that might work, and they come up with some guidelines for next month's meeting to consider if the COG Board wished to proceed with that. On May 5th and May 6th, I attended two grand opening events, that being of the Edward Jones Investment Company and Fireball Jewelers in downtown Angels Camp. And earlier today, I attended the briefing on the Buxton study that we're all to hear later on in the agenda as well. That's all I have to report.
Okay. I attended the LACCO meeting that Vice Mayor Follendorf already reported on. The week before, however, I was supposed to attend the Mark Twain Festival Planning Committee meeting, but I had a last-minute conflict. And since Ann Forrest is here, I'd like to ask her to say a few words about the important things to the city that were discussed in the meeting. No?
Well, as you know, we have renamed the Gold Rush Day Mark Twain Festival, and it is planned for the third Saturday in October, October 15th, from 11 till 5:00. Plans are well underway. All the entertainment that we had booked last year has agreed to come back, and it's the same price, so that's all taken care of. And we'll have probably a better schedule of events, but it is really all going to revolve around Mark Twain and that Gold Rush era, the 1860s to 1890s, in terms of music and theme. And we're expanding the Gold Rush Village over by the visitor's center with lots of crafts and other activities. We've had great help from Calaveras Arts Council and the Manzamita Writers Press, and they are planning a literary festival on the Sunday, and we're hoping that eventually this will become like a three-day event with the street fair in the middle of it. So, I think that's probably encapsulates what's happening right now. And as, while I'm up here, I may as well tell you that we have canceled the 4th of July, and we appreciate very much your, the funding that you provided, but it turns out that on the 2nd of July, the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District is doing an event for veterans complete with flag and military guard and all of that at the high school on that day. And so it seemed redundant to try to do that on Friday evening or 4th of July and use the same people. In fact, it was hard to do that. So, we have, we will not, as Angels Camp itself, will not be doing anything special for the 4th of July this year.
Great. Thanks, Ann. Well, it seems that was a good segue into the next item, which is public comment. You've already covered that. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda, and matters raised by the public will automatically be referred to staff or placed on the next meeting agenda. So, at this time, I would invite anybody to the podium that wants to make a public comment.
Good evening. The purpose of being here, Dennis Mills, is to bring you up to speed on what is happening because I know New Malone's drives a great portion of the tourism industry here in Angels Camp. But back on April 5th, we testified before the State Water Resources Control Board asking for some concessions to the urgency change position on how New Malone's was to be operated for the remainder of the year, specifically in an urgency change petition, and it was granted. And the result is, is that instead of seeing 267,000 acre feet of storage of Malone's as we did last year, they will be adding an additional 140,000 acre feet of storage as of October 31st of this year. Their goal is 410,000 plus or minus acre feet of water, which is roughly 16%. So, it's not a great deal, but it's still very helpful, I think, to the community. Secondly, I want to have the city be aware that CCWD has completed their update on the urban water management plan. It is available for public review and comment to the end of June, and we would like to be sure to get this inserted. We've set a placeholder in the general plan update for the county to have this inserted before the IR process goes forward. So, if anyone's interested in seeing it or would like to have a copy, we'll be sure to get one to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council under public comment? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda, approving minutes of the regular meeting of May 3rd, 2016, adopt a Resolution 16-19 approving closure of Route 49 in the historic district in several city streets for Mark Twain Badger Boosters Gold Run. Item C is directing staff to submit a request for proposals for the completion of the design and environmental phase of the Murphy's Grade Road sidewalk project, and the last item being direct staff to submit a request for proposals for the completion of the project study report for Angel Oaks Drive and Thonry Lane. Is there any member of the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent going? Any member of staff? Any member of the public that wishes to speak on one of those items? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D. Move by Councilman Soban, seconded by Councilwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It carries order zero. The next item is a public hearing relating to the acceptance of the Tourism and Business Expansion Study, and Terry Cox will give the staff report.
Yeah. Good evening, Terry Cox, Cox Consulting. I do have my regular sign-in sheet for anybody that's attending the public hearing, and written comments regarding the city's Community Development Block Grant Program can be addressed to City Hall. So, just briefly, this grant was funded back in the fall of 2014. The scope of work involved was to define and evaluate the local service area for this business and tourist expansion study, to profile tourist customers, match retailers and restaurants to the city's market potential, prepare up to 20 marketing packages, develop a visitor acquisition model, determine potential job growth from implementing the study. So, Buxton Company was selected as the consultant to prepare the study. They already made a presentation of the report back in May 2015, so what we've got tonight is an update on that report. And in the new update, they have estimated that up to 386 jobs would be created if the study were implemented and the recommended businesses located in Angels. Now, we have Cheyenne Robinson from Buxton Company who's going to do a short presentation of the report.
So, in terms of procedures, we'll hear the presentation first, and then we'll take public testimony.
Correct, yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for having me here today. It's a pleasure to be in Angels Camp this evening. I'm Cheyenne Robinson, as I'm sure you may remember from last May. I'm your day-to-day account executive and point of contact with Buxton. As we have been working very closely with Destination Angels Camp, I'm very pleased to present you all with an executive summary of our in-depth findings. I'll do my best to keep it to 15 minutes and be respectful of your time. I'd like to ask that if the council has any questions throughout the presentation, please let me know at any time. As you all are aware, you've partnered with us to understand all the economic conditions that are present in Angels Camp and seek an actionable program to grow your retail from existing businesses to new businesses in your market. And we do this through utilizing our retail expertise, knowing the companies that are fit for your market and those that aren't, and why, and evaluating those that are expanding or operating within your region. Utilizing our expertise of building forecasting models for over 3,000 retailers over the past two decades, and knowing from a retailer's perspective how we need to evaluate your market to get to those target retailers that we need to be focused on for recruitment efforts. So, first, starting with your consumer profile, understanding who your consumers are and how they're living and spending their dollars, from your residents to also your visitors, knowing where they're coming from. So, seeing that drive time trade area, how far in minutes potential consumers for retail are willing to drive for a location in Angels Camp. We're also evaluating those what-else conditions, so the retail marketplace for retailers, so things like competition, looking at existing businesses, then evaluating our database of over 5,000 retailers to know those that are in markets just like yours but aren't currently here, and they should be. So, narrowing it down to, out of the universe of retailers, to a Target 20 to focus on. Now, for today's meeting, we are keeping those lists of retailers confidential to give you a competitive perspective. I do have key findings to share with you as far as who your consumers are, how we're evaluating your, all the economic conditions that are present, and we'll take a look at some of the key categories of retail that we have validated can sustain within Angels Camp. So, first, looking at who your consumers are. We know in taking a look at a drive time trade area in 17 minutes around Angels Camp, 21% of households are your older empty nesting couples and singles. They're enjoying a rural lifestyle, they're open-minded individuals. Then you have 17% of households in 17 minutes that are your stable mentalistic seniors, enjoying a rural lifestyle as well, avid TV watchers, and these are cautious money managers. These are looking at the residential base. Now, if we take a look at your visitors, we know that 9% of the visitors, so those non-residents spending within Angels Camp, are more of an upscale type of consumer. They're affluent, highly educated. And taking a look at your day tripper, some key findings here. 15% of the nearby visitors within Angels Camp are your lower-middle-class consumers. They typically have a low collar and agricultural jobs and enjoy hunting and fishing. Now, these are some of the key characteristics of your residents and visitors, and we'll take a look shortly in how we're able to get down to some of these key findings. But before doing so, I'd like to just take a step and see if there are any questions so far. So, at Buxton, we are an analytics company. We take a look at all the households in the U.S. and bucket them into these one of 71 different segments that tell us tens and thousands of different characteristics, lifestyle behaviors, and buying habits about who these consumers are. We're looking here at the breakout across the U.S. One of the many variables is income, so you are looking at an income trend line with the more affluent households on the far left. Each one of these segments has a creative code and a name associated with it. We'll take a look at some of the top-performing types of consumers for Angels Camp here shortly. But I do want to highlight how we're able to get down to this data, knowing those lifestyle characteristics and traits, is because as consumers, we're really giving away information every day, from buying and selling your house to your loyalty cards, and we buy and source that data so that you can make business strategic decisions. And one of those top types of consumers for Angels Camp is called L41 booming and consuming. These are your older empty nesting couples. We're seeing on the far right that they make about 1% of all U.S. households, but when we take a look at 17 minutes around Angels Camp, we'll see that this consumer is over 20% of households within 17 minutes around your community. Now, these are your, typically have a busy social lives, open-minded individuals, and we do have a full guide and link embedded into this presentation if anyone would like to dive into each of the specific segments to better understand the customers of Angels Camp. Now, we take a look at your profile. So, in 17 minutes, we know that L41 makes up 20% of households for Angels Camp. Now, you have a few other prevalent consumers that I'd like to highlight, L43, Q64, and Q65. Out of the 71 different segments, these four make up over 50% of your retail trade area. And these consist of your lower-middle-class and empty nesting couples, as well as your older stable seniors and settled retirees. Now, additionally, through our partnership, we have extracted all the purchases within Angels Camp. So, not only do we know from a drive time perspective who the residents are, we also know who's came in, looked into your community, and made a transaction. So, by knowing who's coming in and spending, we'll take a look across different consumer types, so looking at all of these spend versus your resident versus the visitor, and then looking at your day trippers, so those nearby visitors coming in and spending within Angels Camp. So, this is looking at the dominant consumer types, and that's going to be that new page that you all have here. So, the first four is looking at the most recent data, so from December 2014 to November 2015, seeing the consumer makeup. But then when we take a look from the previous year, we're seeing that there are some highlights of differences. So, if you take a look at the tourists, you'll notice AO2, BO7, in the previous year, that wasn't a prevalent consumer, but now it's one of the dominant type of customers for Angels Camp. These are your wealthy, established, and affluent couples. And then E20 now is a prevalent day tripper. This is your upper-middle-class type customers for Angels Camp. Now, again, we have a full guide if you want to dive into more of the specifics, knowing the type of communication that these consumers prefer to what they typically look like, and that link is embedded at the bottom of this slide here for you all. Now, where are these consumers coming from? We know it's not a one-size-fits-all. We have to get beyond the city boundaries and looking at your drive time trade area. So, overall, if we look at 15, 17 minutes, we know there's potential of over 12,000 customers for a retailer. And for your community, citizens would be willing to drive 15 minutes for fast food, whereas hardware and home improvement, you could be pulling from up to a 25-minute drive time. And there's over 38,000 potential consumers in that 25-minute drive time. We're seeing here a few examples on the map. Now, of course, there are going to be those consumers who will drive further distances, but in looking at, from, looking at your market from a retailer's perspective, you want to understand where are those day-in, day-out sustainable consumers. So, looking at it from what's close and surrounding your community, who's going to be that Monday through Friday customer. And our drive time software is also looking at a number of different factors as well, so speed limits, time of day, looking at natural barriers, as well as additional variables. So, now that we know where your day-in, day-out customers are coming from, we also want to look across the U.S. and seeing who's came into the community and made a transaction. So, looking at the credit card spend across the U.S. by DMA, we're looking at a breakout from high to low spend. Top three DMAs spending within Angels Camp. Of course, you're going to see Sacramento as being the top, 57% of spend, and the previous year, it consisted of 37%, so that's made an increase. San Francisco, another top metro market spending in your community, 19% of spend within Angels Camp. Previously, was 38%. And then lastly, in that top three, LA, about 2% of spend, and in the previous year, looking at 5%.
There seem to be, you know, pretty significant variance of a 20% increase in one instance and little, less than 20% in the other between Sacramento, Stockton, and San Francisco. Is there anything you can attribute that swing to, or is it just random, or was, I can't think of any particular event that may have caused that.
So, sometimes you will see, and when you, when you look year over year, in some cases in different markets, you might see an increase if you were to market to that particular area. So, I don't know if, just as an example, maybe in the first year, there was marketing done to the San Francisco or LA market. Maybe the next year, that wasn't done. And so that could, that could be an example of where you would see those changes, or it could simply be, you know, maybe, maybe an event that was hosted in the first year didn't occur, and so those, those visitors didn't come in as often. Maybe the weather wasn't as good last year as it was the previous. It could be a number of reasons. So now that we know who your consumers are at an in-depth level, we've gotten beyond demographics, looking at how they're spending their dollars, knowing where they're coming from. For a retailer, there's also other conditions that they need to know and understand for your market to evaluate the potential of Angels Camp. So looking at the retail market conditions for your community, we'll look at that very shortly. But first, I did want to highlight some, some of the spend in the nearby region. So if we're looking, look at a breakout, so we looked at the overall spend. Now, if we break that down and look at the residents versus the day trippers and the tourists, you'll see that 18% of the transactions within Angels Camp occurred from your residents, whereas 23% occurred from your day trippers, and the remaining, 57% occurred from your tourists. So a large percent of the spend that's coming in and making purchases within your community are from your tourists. Now, if we look at the day tripper zip codes, which are defined by those listed here, the top four zip codes range from Copperopolis, Murphy's, San Andreas, to Sonora. And out of that 18%, or excuse me, that 23%, those four zip codes make up 18% of the day tripper spending within Angels Camp. Now, in the previous year, those four zip codes made up 12%, so that has, has increased. Now, as I was mentioning, knowing where those consumers are coming from and who they are, we also have to look at those additional market factors. So for a retailer, they need to see if they have been in areas with a similar competitive presence, evaluating all of the existing businesses that are here. Is there enough supply and demand to support them within the community? So we know, for example, some of the top three categories of retail that are leaving and spending dollars elsewhere range from electronics to clothing, as well as general merchandise. So those are top three areas that Angels Camp is experiencing leakage in. Now, in addition to knowing the competitive presence for a retailer, to get down to those target matches, we have to also look at the existing businesses that are present in the area draw that's here. So things like grocery stores, from Save Mark to existing businesses like Mike's Pizza, as well as Starbucks, Taco Bell, and looking at hotels such as Best Western, evaluating all of your existing businesses, seeing the retailer is in markets with a similar area draw, so where you have increased foot traffic, as well as accessibility of your site. So looking at road scores, traffic volumes, there's over, around 15,000 in traffic within the community of Angels Camp, and seeing, ensuring that they have locations with the same similar mix of customers, as well as demographics and market conditions. So by evaluating all of these key factors that determine performance for a retailer, we know those companies that we need to be focused on. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to keep them confidential to give you a competitive advantage, but these range from dining options such as wings to a steakhouse, quick service company as well, to furniture, looking at groceries, sporting goods, hardware, as well as general merchandise and shoe stores. These are examples of the type of categories of retail that we've identified can sustain in Angels Camp, and are, and prefer to locate around the existing customers that you have in your community. Now, as far as where we are in our overall, overall partnership. We started our partnership in November of 2014. This, of course, began with the introductory call. We've been evaluating your retail trade area, the existing customers, knowing who your residents are, your visitors that are spending within the community, identifying the retailers that are the best fit for, for the residents and visitors of Angels Camp. Then we moved forward into implementing our findings after we identified our, our top 20. And then in this year, we began our analysis in, in January. So seeing how the conditions have changed, looking at all the current market factors, seeing the additional retailers that we need to be, be focused on, and now we're going to be starting implementing our findings, beginning those conversations with the additional retailers while continuing the dialogue that has been started within, with, within the previous year, and so that we can overall support the existing businesses and increase the retail growth within Angels Camp. So at this time, would you like to dive into any specific questions that you all may have or would like to know about our study?
Sure. I have a question with regard to internet shopping. Recently, I saw news, I don't know what channel it was, but there's box stores in Sacramento area that are closing because of people choosing to purchase their goods through internet services. And then there was comments made about what they could do to offset that. How do you factor in what you see for our community, the impact of internet shopping?
So one thing in looking at who your consumers are, one of the many variables that we reevaluate included in that is, do they prefer brick-and-mortar locations, or do they prefer, prefer online shopping? Now, one thing to highlight is that, yes, online sales do impact the retail marketplace. We've seen in recent studies, I've seen anywhere from 90 to 95% of retail sales actually occur from the brick-and-mortar stores. And now, what a lot of retailers are having to do to adapt to that trend is taken to the, an omni-channel approach. So a retailer, it's very difficult to sustain with just a brick-and-mortar store with the way the market place is. You have to adapt, you have to have both that online and in-store experience. But overall, we're seeing that that online sales makes up a very small percentage overall. A lot of times, you'll see in studies that shoppers will go on, will go online, but then go into the store to, to make, make the purchase. But on to what you were saying as far as having some of the store closures, that is a, another trend that, that you're seeing now, but to have to adapt to the changes in the marketplace. So Kohl's, for example, they're opening stores that are half the square footage that they were before, and they are making closures, having to locate more strategically and making sure that they can sustain based on the existing market conditions, but then also evaluating, if we put this location here, is that going to increase our online sales as well?
Any other comments? Thank you, Shay.
Thank you.
So at this point, should we open the, okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue, make comments, or anything? Okay. Seeing none?
Short hearing.
What's that?
Short hearing.
Yeah. Oppose the public hearing? And with that, then Terry, you will file the appropriate documents with the...
I believe we have a resolution.
What? We have a resolution, yes. Bear with me a minute.
1616.
Yeah, okay. We have a resolution accepting the tourism and business expansion study funded by State CDBG grant 13-CDBG-8948, resolution 1616. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make the motion to adopt the resolution 1616.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Morris, seconded by Councilman Soban to adopt resolution 1616. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the report will be on Destination Angels Camp's website on Friday.
Great.
Thank you.
The next item is approval grant agreement with the Department of Water Resources and City Engineer Dave Myers.
All right. Good evening. A while back, before the Butte Fire occurred, the Seattle applied for a Department of Water Resources grant for funding to prepare for a flood emergency. As typical with many of the grant applications, it started without asking for, it started out by asking for a lot of things, but in dealings with the DWR, it was trimmed down to a few items that dealt mainly with flood preparation. There were things like flood preparation, GIS mapping, updating the emergency operation plan, and national incident management system training for everybody, and a tabletop exercise to practice the NIMS. That application was approved and a funding agreement was developed. The activities in this grant, while specifically addressing a flood emergency, are useful for almost any type of emergency. In fact, we used many of those things when we opened the command center during the Butte This kind of training and coordination is, is going to reach, reach out to joiner agencies, and it'll be a great benefit to the city, and they will fund us for this, these activities. So for, for those basic reasons why I'm recommending to the council to approve this agreement and authorize the city administrator to sign on their behalf.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Meyer?
May I answer my question in the presentation?
So we're, we don't need a resolution here, we just need a motion approving, I guess, contract number 46001133344? Is there a motion to that effect?
Move.
Yes. Moved by Councilman Soban, seconded by...
Who's seconded?
Alex Meyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously as well. Thank you, Dave. The last item is approval agreement for the water and wastewater rate study and budget arrangement, again, our city engineer.
Didn't leave. Okay, one of the parts of the business providing drink water to the city is the setting of the monthly rates. These rates are primarily based on the amount of water consumed and are intended to cover the cost of producing the water and all the infrastructure and compliance efforts that go along with that process. Recently, there's been some court cases and rulings that affect water rate setting, and so it's a quandary. The quandary is, is that the state is now asking for tiered rates that would almost force you into conservation, yet the, one of the recent court cases is just the opposite. You can only charge for the amount of the actual cost of producing that water. So with those two issues, it was one of the things that we decided that we needed somebody with experience, and that is experienced with the current water rate setting criteria. With that in mind, we set out a request for proposal, and we received four proposals from good companies, Blackwater from Modesto, KSN from Stockton, Michael Baker from San Diego, and Bartle Wells from Berkeley. Staff reviewed these proposals and selected Bartle Wells from Berkeley based on their merits and their approach to the work. They have, they have many years of experience and are currently doing rate studies on water agencies similar in size to our city and in this area. So it's my recommendation that we, we contract with Bartle Wells. A copy of their proposal is included in the package, but one of the difficulties I have to be cautious about is that water rate studies are kind of volatile, and so I added in there an ability to include a change order of about 10% of the contract cost. Are there any questions?
All right. You mentioned volatility, in what area are you referring to?
Well, as you go into setting the water rate studies, we, we figured there's a certain amount of public outreach, certain amount of meetings, certain amount of efforts they're going to do, and that's what the proposal was. But as you go into these, you may find some difficulties, I call them hiccups, but things that you have to, to ask for additional efforts on the, for the consultants, or actually additional efforts on city staff or some other areas. It's just something you just don't want to come back to the council for, and we are pretty close to the amount that was budgeted in last year's budget.
I think the other volatility Dave mentioned in his report is the volatility with regards to rates in general in California, and the city attorney could probably speak on that for some time before everyone went to sleep, with regards to the number of changes that has occurred, and it's a constant moving thing, and we've got, having a certified smart person goes a long way in helping us get there. In addition, the current rate study is over 10 years old, which needs some major testing often in that regard, and the other volatility has to do with our water supplier and the stabilization of their funds, and I think you'll note that all the proposals caught that variable and understand that variable, and will work with that moving forward.
I will add that water rate consultants are much more boring than city attorneys.
Much more. Much more. I had a couple of questions. You didn't list the amount of the bids. Was Bartle Wells the low bidder?
Bartle Wells was the low bidder also. It would pass as far as the merits, but they were also one of the lower, they were the lowest cost.
Okay. Lowest, lowest responsible bidder.
Yes.
And then there was one phrase in your report that I'm not quite sure what it means. You talked about your evaluation criteria, and you list them, then you say, "Lastly, the proposals were judged on how well the consultant would fit in with the city, given the inside knowledge that the reviewers..." What inside knowledge are you referring, you mean staff, staff inside knowledge?
Yeah, our staff knowledge, we, we know our situation, but when you send out an RFP, you kind of give them 10 items to take a look at, and they propose back. You don't always cover everything that you, you really want to see in a proposal. So in reviewing these proposals, like Mike said, the UWPA issue, how do we handle that? They addressed that issue a whole lot better than we would have, we, well, we didn't put it in the RFP at all, but they picked up on that and addressed that issue. So how, how they responded to that, how well we know we can handle with our staff what we're going to do, is that little factor. So if they fit in well with us, that was a big plus.
Okay. And I think the other part of that, while not explicitly stated, is the fact that Julia, the finance officer, has had experience working with Bartle Wells in the past. It wasn't the only criteria, but having past experience working with the firm, you tend to know how they work and how they operate, but also council's aware of how much background Julie has done with regards to rebuilding the finances that were in disarray prior to her arrival, and we are going to be able to hand, hand the consultant really, really good data for them to work from, and so this should make a real seamless project.
And to add the last little bit to that is, when I called the other consultants to say that I was bringing an agenda item recommending Bartle Wells, all the other consultants said that we made a very good choice. So they were respected well.
Okay. Any other council comments? Any member of the public wish to comment on this? Okay, with, and again, we're only approving an agreement, no resolution, right?
Right.
Okay. So with that, I would ask for a motion approving the agreement for the water and wastewater rate study and budget adjustment with contract to Bartle Wells Associates.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bee Hill? I mean, Soban, I'm sorry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Scott is our usual maker of the motions, so. With that, that concludes our agenda, and...
Calendar.
Yeah. Mary will highlight the calendar for us.
Tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. is a COG-TAC meeting at the COG conference room. Thursday is, museum commission meeting has been canceled because it is fair time. The youth parade is at 10 a.m.